Good evening. I would like to welcome you. It is 6:00 PM. This is a regular meeting of the Oak Harbor City Council. Today is May 2nd. We start our, or, May 2nd, 2017, we start our meetings with an invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. I'd like you, I'd like to invite you to stand and join us if you'd like. I think tonight's invocation will be led by Reverend Rilla Barrett with the St. Stevens Episcopal Church.
Let us pray. Holy One, we give you thanks for this day, for adding it to our lives. We thank you for the many blessings of this day, for the place where we live, for the citizens of this and our neighboring communities, for our families and friends, for the opportunity to serve you and the gift of your love in Jesus Christ. We recognize our blessings and we recognize the challenges we face in the needs of our community. We ask for your guidance, oh God, show us how we can best serve you in this community by serving our citizens and using our resources in the best way. Give us wisdom, courage, hope, and vision of how you would have us serve your people. Speak to us, Lord, and give us ears to hear you. Amen.
Thank you Reverend Barrett. Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I see that we have a, an absent council member tonight, Councilor Heisen called and is ill, so, like, yes, Council Campbell.
I've moved that we excuse Councilor Heisen.
Second.
Got a motion in a couple of seconds, so I'll give that one to Wassinger, to excuse Councilor Heisen. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Approval of agenda. How would the council like? Yes, Councilor Omburg?
Thank you Mayor. I, motion to approve the, the agenda as presented.
Okay, motion by Councilor Omburg, second by Councilor Campbell, to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okido. We're off onto item number two, presentations. We have a proclamation tonight, and on behalf of the National Bike Month, I do see we have some people in the audience that looks like they rode their bikes here. That's, that's wonderful. Accepting, I understand, is Trey Everett with the Whidby Island Bicycle Club, and I'd like to, at this, at this time, say that the Bicycle, Whidby Island Bicycle Club, it's very instrumental in helping with our Whidby Island Marathon events just this last, April 23rd. They helped with pacing as well as keeping the runners safe, so many, many thanks. Looks like there's more of them, some urging going on.
Sure they come up, absolutely, yes. Yeah, they're in uniform. In fact, I was even thinking, in fact, I threatened, I think, that I was gonna wear my spandex today, too.
Thank you for that.
That, that, yeah, that would have been our first. It's my pleasure to read this proclamation for the National Bike Month. Whereas the bicycle is an economical, healthy, convenient, and environmentally sound form of transportation, and an excellent tool for recreation and enjoyment of Oak Harbor scenic beauty. And whereas bicycling brings people together, encourages discovery, and fosters community engagement. And whereas bicycling can integrate the physical activities into our daily routine, and whereas creating a bicycling-friendly community has been shown to improve citizens' health, well-being, and quality of life, supporting student learning outcomes, and reducing pollution, congestion, wear and tear in our streets and roads, and, but not wear and tear on our knees and bikes. I threw that in, we had to do that a few times. And whereas Whidby Island roads and trail systems attract cyclists each year, providing economic health, transportation, tourism, and scenic beauty. And whereas the education of bicyclists and motorists, as to the proper and safe operation of bicycles, is important to ensure the safety and comfort of all users. And whereas, through the proclamation of National Bike Month, the city also recognizes both Bike to Work Week and Bike to School Day. Now therefore we, Bob Severance, Mayor, and council members of the city of Oak Harbor, do hereby proclaim Month of May as National Bike Month. Sign the second day of May, 2017, Bob Severance, Mayor.
Thank you.
Now I'll take my coat off, because I haven't, no, I'm not gonna do that. Thanks for coming here.
Appreciate it.
And you get your stamp up and say something.
Oh, no, 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 no.
You may, you may see these jerseys rolling down the, you come up here, Mike. Yeah, you'll see, you'll see him on his bike all the time, every day, and, and he's on a tandem. If he's not by himself, he's with his wife on the tandem. He probably has more miles put in, I don't know. You have a lot of miles every day, too.
No, I have the most.
Oh, you have the most.
I just wanted to address the council here and tell you that I'm particularly happy whenever I see the police on their bicycles on patrol. There were three of them, I noticed, in the parade, and one of the policewoman even joined the bike club and did a few whiffers dills. But you don't see as many things on a bicycle, but you see a lot more detail when you're riding a bike. So I'm always happy to see them out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Anyone else?
Sure, sure.
Oh, good, great.
I am, I have a, a second role besides the Whidby Island Bicycle Club. I am the Transportation Planner for the Island County, and just wanted to let everybody here know that we are updating our non-motorized trail plan, trails plan, and that spans Whidby and Kamehameha Islands. So Oak Harbor is certainly an important part of that. Also, I'll be meeting with Washington State Department of Transportation's new Active Transportation Director this month, on the 17th. So if you have concerns, ideas, opportunities for their facilities as they go through Oak Harbor, I'd be happy to bring them forward for you. Thank you.
That's, that's great. You know, you, you look a lot different than when I've sat beside you in I don't know how many meetings at the county, with a tie on and without the helmet there. Thank you very much.
Yeah, don't try to keep up with them, you're on a bicycle and he's on the road, too. When he's riding his single speed, he's going uphill faster than many of us can ride downhill.
Oh, that's, that's neat.
Thanks.
Thanks to the Whidby Island Bicycle Club. Keep it up, and we appreciate you guys. Okay, next item on the agenda is citizen comment period. Citizens may comment on subjects of interest not listed on the agenda, or items listed on the, on the consent agenda. To ensure comments are properly recorded, state your name clearly into the microphone, and please limit your comments to three minutes, to ensure all citizens have sufficient time to speak. So citizen comment period is now open.
Yes.
Christine Cribb.
Mayor, Council, Christine Cribb, Oak Harbor Chamber. I wanted to check in and give a report after our weekend's festivities. Two things I have. The first is Holland Happening. We had over 100 entries in the parade. Thank you to those of you that participated. We're up seven, 26 from last year. And Whidby Coffee reported Saturday the highest sales day ever at that Pioneer location. So while it wasn't Toppin's highest day, it was certainly a good day for coffee. I really want to thank the city staff who help with every event that we do, and once again, they get all the kudos for making our city and our chamber look good. We really appreciate. Parks, parks and streets, they were, they were just incredible. So we thank you. We'd also like to share, as many of you know, I've spoke to a few of you, that we've started a Legislative Affairs Committee at the Chamber, and we want to target the business community's legislative priorities. And after the committee formed, we sent out a membership survey, which went to 650 inboxes, and the resounding priority was the need for targeted housing. One real estate agent reported to the Chamber that there is a waiting list of 350 families to purchase a home in the range of $200,000 to $300,000. Another agent told us, that told the Chamber that four out of five showings are off-island from that agency. The turnkey livability, livable homes sell within 24 to 48 hours in Oak Harbor right now. We're concerned about the pressure on the bridge, and the congestion, and the backup during peak tourism season. We know the city's plan is to build from within, but respectively, we ask you to take another look. Families with guaranteed income from NAS Whidby want to live here, they want their children to go to school here, and I want to help the business community get what they're asking for here. I serve on the Housing Task Force with the mayor, and that he and Commissioner Johnson formed, and while they're making forward progress, I want you to know that the business community is behind identifying any possible means to provide housing which will boost the economy and the commerce in Oak Harbor. Thank you.
Thank you, Christine. Anyone else? Citizen comment period. Okay, seeing none. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Looks like we have items for A through D, and if, unless, unless somebody wants to pull one of those items to discuss, we'll, they will be approved as presented. Anyone, okay. No questions on that. We're moving on to Mayor's comments. Wow, we're making good headway here. I'll try not to slow us down, but I do have a few items. May is National Military Appreciation Month, so the entire month of May, I think most of us appreciate our military all year round, but May has been designated as the National Military Appreciation Month. May 4th is the National Day of Prayer. You've already heard about National Bike, well, National Bike to School Day is actually May 10th. So if you were inclined to ride your bike to, to school, or even ride your bike to work, that might be the, a great day to do it, May 10th. And I already talked about National Bike Month, and, and we heard a fine proclamation read by Councilor Omburg. And I think that we have more to come. It looks like at the May 16th council meeting, not sure about that, but we do have National Public Works Week, which will begin on May 21st to the 27th. Were you aware of that, Brett?
Yes.
Okay, National Public Works Week. We do have some new artwork here in the council chambers. The artist is Dottie Sanders. Dottie, after growing up in New York, was surrounded by many forms of, or by many art forms, and lucky enough to have an art teacher in her school. As she chose "what I want to do with my life," quote unquote, she knew it would be teaching in the arts. As a college graduate with a Bachelor of Science and a Master's Degree in Art Education, Sanders taught in the New York State Schools until moving to Nome, Alaska. While in Alaska, Dottie found a wealth of opportunities to paint and travel. She also learned to teach writing, jewelry, and silver fabrication, drama, literature, and to synthesize art into classroom and life experiences. Dottie prefers to work with water media, like watercolors, acrylic, and materials which mix with water because they have a mind of their own. Dottie is a member of Whidby Allied Arts, and her work is in artworks gallery at Green Bank Farm. Dottie and her husband Kent, a jewelry artist, built a home on Whidby in, in 2007. The magic of watching artists grow continues at her favorite art class held at the Oak Harbor Senior Center on Mondays from 1 until 4. So thank you, Dottie Sanders, for your work here and, and allowing us to display it. I want to, at this time, brag about something that happened here in Oak Harbor, and I think the idea was, was just within the last, since the first of the year, we had one of our, one of our local art, actually Art Commission members, very new on our, on our city Art Commission, come up with an idea, and the idea was, was what was then named Sculpt, Pop-Up Stone Sculpture Gallery. Oak Harbor Main Street Association got, got involved with Therese Kingsbury's idea. Therese's husband, John, was a, what is, was an immense health, help, and, and for the month of April, the entire month of April, Sculpt was open for the first time ever in Oak Harbor, every day from 11:00 AM until 7:00 PM, with special Saturday evening receptions, with treats and wine, and visits from the artists. Out of nowhere came an amazing pop-up stone sculpture gallery in the middle of our downtown. With the small to the immense, the full range of the sculptors' art was on display throughout April. A combined project through the efforts of John and Therese, as I mentioned, Melissa Riker worked countless hours. Melissa's our Oak Harbor Main Street Executive Director, and obviously the Oak Harbor Arts Commission was involved, several other volunteers. We want to thank them. But Sculpt was, became a local and international pop-up stone sculpture gallery in no time. Over 100 pieces of 3D art were shown, 35 artists from as far as Alberta, Canada, and Portland, Oregon. The event sold 39 sculptures, 47 if you count the studio stone carving kits, in 29 days with a total of nearly $30,000. The final weekend merging with the Holland Happening Street Fair couldn't have made it any better. So I can't, I can't thank Therese and John enough for the idea, for the tremendous amount of hard work, and all the volunteers that helped them, and, and obviously, as I already mentioned, Melissa Riker spending just countless hours to make that work. But Sculpt was one fun event. Rhonda and I were able to get there a few times, and it was fun and entertaining and a, and a great idea. And I think there was at least one on the Art Commission that said, "That'll never work in Oak Harbor, that idea." So it worked pretty darn well. Finally, you've, you've heard, we heard from Christine Cribb during the, the comments about housing, and I, I have stated in my goals, my, that I intend to spend as much effort as possible to help with what I certainly understand and know to be a housing shortage in our community. I think the specific needs that, the Affordable Housing Task Force was tasked with, with starting on was the needs for people that work in Oak Harbor, and, and for the, for them to have affordable housing. And this will not only complement my economic development plan that I, that I have been announcing, but it will continue to foster a strong relationship with NAS Whidby, which I've been working hard on. And to this end, I've actually had a committee that helped me establish a plan that I did announce at our recent retreat that the, that the council had, and, and I asked a couple of our counselors to, to be involved with the, with a small committee that helped me set our plan. And, and one of the, one of the main items is, is the need to find housing, whether it be additional rental housing, or especially something that's affordable in, in a way of a residence to live in. And so I have, not only the Councilor Servadius helped me establish my plan that I, I announced, I've now asked him to help in leading to accomplish this objective. So I'm, I'm, I guess I'm, I want to make sure our staff understands that Councilor Servadius is, is going to be probably asking some tough questions, or at least getting some, trying to get some answers and help me, and, because he's, he's certainly got an interest in moving this, this need forward. So I appreciate your willingness to do that, Joel, and, and hopefully we can work to streamline the process and, and, and get some things done quicker rather than, than not. So with that said, thanks again, and, and I think that'll conclude my comments for now. So I'll, I'll look to the council if you've got any input now is the time. Anybody, yes, Councilor Wassinger?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to mention to you and Councilmember Servadius that I, too, am willing to help in this housing issue in, in any way that I can. It's a passion of mine, too. I know I have a vested interest with my family's business, but any way that I can, can help from a council member's perspective, I'm certainly willing to do that as well.
Thank you. Erica, in fact, Councilor Wassinger was, was the other counselor on my, on my committee, as well as Christine from the Chamber and several others. We had another employee and Melissa Riker and a couple of retired business people, I think, involved, and so, thank you. So other, other council comments? Anybody? Yes, Mayor Proton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had a great time over the weekend during Holland Happening, and so with other hundreds of people that plucked to downtown Oak Harbor, enjoy the carnival and other amenities in, in downtown Oak Harbor. And also during the parade, and lots of people who stood the cold and a little bit of rain, but a lot of people enjoyed that Holland Happening. And we'd like to thank the Chamber of Commerce for their big part in, in holding the parade and the Holland Happening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Proton. Yes, Councilor Omburg?
Thank you, Mayor. My report is a brief one on Island Transit. Being a member of the Island Transit Board, I'd like to let people know that Island Transit made their final payment of their loan that they took out, maybe three years ago, to meet payroll for a variety of reasons. It's nice to have that financial monkey off of our back. IT also came to a successful agreement with the Amalgamated Transit Union. It was a challenge. It took us a while to get there, but as it turned out, it did not impact our budget in that we, anything that we anticipated. And I gotta hand kudos to the Executive Director, Mike Nortier. He is a skillful communicator. You know, I continue to be impressed with that gentleman's abilities. In addition, Island Transit, through the guidance of Mr. Nortier and the staff, we, effective January, July 1, we are making adjustments to some of the routes to make them more service-friendly and more efficient, eliminating a lot of overlap. And basically, we are going to circulate hubs into a express route. So we hope to gain more ridership through our services. And finally, we are considering Saturday services. We'll be working on that this, the rest of this year, and as we work into our, our budget, as we know, we all start working on budgets before the end of the year. And, and Saturday service is also on the table as we look at our budget. So I'm really pleased with the direction that Island Transit is going, and I think that a lot of people work pretty hard on that, both on the board and through Mr. Nortier's guidance. And there's really a very professional and cooperative atmosphere over at Island Transit these days. It's, it's just a nice place to, to be part of, or a nice organization to be part of. Thank you very much.
Well, that's music to our ears, and thank you for the, for the hard work you're putting into that job.
My pleasure.
We appreciate it. Councilor Servadius?
Thank you. I'll dovetail off that. I wasn't gonna mention this, but I actually encountered or I witnessed something that concerned me with an Island Transit bus, so I placed a fairly generic call, and just, you know, reported what I saw. And if you would pass along, Sean Harris, your Ops Manager, actually called back and had a wonderful conversation with him. He followed up on it. What I didn't realize is all those, I don't know if all, but many of the buses have video. And so they were able to watch the video and use it as an educational event, I guess, if you will. So I was just very impressed that they would take the time to follow up on it and call me back. And obviously, he and the organization takes that very seriously. So pass along, kudos to Mr. Harris. Thank you, Mayor. Obviously, more than willing to, to step up and serve in that capacity and take on that challenge. Kind of excited to do it, actually. Couple of things, well, really just one thing I wanted to touch on. The marathon, since we haven't met since then, great event, wonderful event, and I specifically wanted to point out something that I witnessed. We were down there for really the medals portion, the start of the marathon through most of the handing out of the medals. And kudos to the Oak Harbor, Miss Oak Harbor teen and Miss Oak Harbor girls. They were down there leading the medal handing out charge. I don't think they were dressed appropriately. They weren't by a long shot. They were just dressed casually. But that wind coming off the water, and those girls stuck it out to the end. I mean, we finally left towards the end. But what I specifically wanted to point out was just customer service, the epitome of customer service, excellent. Nicole Tesh, I watched so many times the interaction of her with people that would come up with questions, flustered, wanted to know where something was, or how does this work, or, or what's going on. And I know that, I always hate pointing people out or mentioning it, because I know there were so many people involved and so many volunteers. I just wanted to point this out, but, because it was something I witnessed about every 10 minutes, over hours, someone would come up with a question. You couldn't have been more responsive, more polite, more patient, more courteous, and it was just, it was fun to watch. I think we can employ you, teaching some customer service classes here. So thank you for all your efforts in putting that together. Thank you, Mayor.
That's great. Right here, thank you, Nicole. Lot of hard work with that marathon. Thank you. Anyone else? Council comments? Okay. I don't see a city administrator here tonight. Chair's empty, but I do believe we're going to have a clean water facility update. So Brett?
Yeah, good evening. Time for our clean water facility update. Big Iron has returned to Oak Harbor, especially at Windjammer Park. This is our last pile driving effort. We are driving a temporary, it's a trench support system for the odor control unit, so we're driving these H piles in and grouting them in. This is actually halfway done as of today, and we had two weeks into it. So it's actually going very quickly, but it's, it's almost become routine to, to the, to the boring part. Look out the window, and I forgot, well, this is it. But this will be the last ones we do. So it's a major milestone. And this is actually, looks kind of mundane, but if you look at that, those, all those pipes are actually electrical conduits. We're talking about GMP number nine and the electrical part of the project, and it's now starting to move. So if you look at each one of those pipes, they're actually gonna be filled with wires. So that kind of gives you a magnitude of amount of electrical equipment we're gonna have on the site. Recent activities, we are continuing work on the Windjammer plans after the council approved Resolution 1708. We are proceeding right, right ahead with that. The 60% plans are due in late June. We did hear your comments about some of the other aspects of the project, and we are beginning some conversations on that. Our continuing work on Skate the Software Development is ongoing. Hopefully, maybe this fall, we'll have something that people can play with. So we may have made a workshop session, we can bring a computer screen and show you what's going on with that. It's kind of fascinating, but something you have to see. Construction-wise, we're pouring concrete. End of this month, we're gonna have all the decks poured, so that's gonna be pretty much out of the ground. Our self-performing concrete remains ahead of schedule and below labor estimates. We're evaluating GMP number seven. The numbers are looking pretty good with that right now. We have began backfilling around the structures. That was on a critical path. We called the nine line, backfilling nine, when it was our critical path. That's now done and ahead of schedule, so the critical path shifting to other activities. Like I said, electrical and, and GMP number 11 are moving right ahead. Inside the parking lot, as you see, we've got, we're busy there. We did complete the utility relocations. We dealt with five different, or six different utilities in that parking lot before we started driving those piles. Didn't want to put a pile through a big electrical conduit. And some of you may notice, at the end of City Beach right now, we've got it closed down with the fence down there. We had to do a, a warranty outfall repair, so that's, at the end of there, we have some activities going on at the end of this week. It's, it was kind of last-minute flash. We didn't get much chance for public notice on that, but that'll be, will be in and out of there in about a week. We're fixing a couple of things. Like I said, the parking lot is closed. As you noticed in my previous picture, it will be closed for a while. We do have an alternate access now from the parking lot behind the PBY, and you come in from the south side. People are interested in visiting this. this. You can still come to the front door, and the ringer still works, but people are parking and walking in now. And we're getting a lot of people like to come up and look at the project from our view windows. Nothing new on the funding side. I'm not sure if we've heard where the legislative approval is yet, and we're still pursuing funding opportunities. Kind of left us on blank. Right now, we're looking at a pretty slow summer for council decisions. Right now, we're probably going to start building something for a long time, and it's kind of where we're going. So, I don't have anything on the upcoming schedule. We maybe come back and give you some progress reports and work sessions, especially with park design. But we haven't got anything on the horizon for that yet. We may, we are hoping to begin some discussions with Arts Commission on bringing some art into Windjammer Park, too. If Therese Kingsbury was here last meeting and made a comment to that. So, Joe and I are planning to hopefully meet with them on their next meeting and start that conversation. Schedule-wise, we're pretty much in schedule. We publish critical path schedules about every six weeks. We're doing Oak Harbor number 30 right now, and things are looking good. Public outreach, Mayor, glad you reminded me about Public Works Week. We're actually having, we, last year, we had our Family Fun Day on May 20th, where we had equipment down in the park and invited kids down. We had, last year, we had like 200 kids come down. So, we're having that again. It's going to be on May 20th. And so, it's fun for the little ones. It's designed for the younger crowd. But we're all looking forward to that. Otherwise, you can reach us at www.okeharborplant.org, 914-7000, or work extensions. Email us at treatmentplant@okeharbor.org. And our next committee drop-in hour is May 8th, or by appointment. Any questions?
Well, before we go to questions, I'll tell you that at the Navy League Lunch today, a longtime friend of mine came up, retired Oak Harbor school teacher, been in our system for years and years. And she looked me, looked at me, and she said, "So, do you know what you're doing with that wastewater treatment plant?" And she gave me that teacher's question look. And I said, "Not really, but Brett Arbison does." So, we'll see.
Tell her to come on down and make her eyes glaze.
Counsel questions. Actually, she's been gone, and now she's back from a trip. And I think she's seeing the progress and excited about it. Yes, Counselor Servadius?
Thank you. I know, I think, everyone up here has asked this question. And since you just showed utility lines going in and conduit, I'd look forward to maybe a report at some point as to what we're planning as far as auxiliary conduit. I don't know what else you'd call it. But I know we just had a Holland Happening, and one of the questions that always comes up is power for putting on big events. And I think every one of us up here has asked this question. I just want to continue to be reassured, and we've also talked about this dig-once ordinance, that we have adequate, long-term, future plans for lots of utilities into that park to host events, concerts, et cetera.
That is, we actually talked about it today, and that's one area we're very concerned. With the archeology, it becomes a lot more tricky situation because our digging and with our fill on there, we're trying to deal with that and keeping those utilities in the fill rather than digging in the night ground. But that's something we definitely want to talk about and have, you know, we want to be able to bring the carnivals and stuff in. The carnival equipment is a big energy user, but they usually bring their own power and make sure we have water. We're talking about using recycled water in the park and those type of things, too.
So, maybe at some future update, just let us know. We're planning for X amount of capacity, electrical, make sure we've got Wi-Fi, obviously, water. Thank you.
Counselor Munt?
What time is that show and tell kind of for kids on May 20th?
Family Fun Day?
Family Fun Day?
I don't think, I'll have to check on that. I think it starts at 10 o'clock in the morning, but I'd have to, I'll get you, I'll get back to you on that one.
Could we also let the chamber know so they could help put it out?
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, Counselor Wassinger?
Found it real quick here. It's 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM on May 20th at Windjammer Park.
There you go.
Thank you.
Counselor Umber?
Thank you, Mayor. Hey Brett, in our Thursday morning meetings, you often refer to an efficiency ratio of the amount of material put in versus the labor. Do you have an update for us on that right now?
We're right about 110%, 111% of plan and about 105% of resource. So, that's where we are. We were running 120 last year, but right now, we're fighting a lot. That headwork structure's got a lot of little things. So, for us to put in 20 yards is almost as much work as, you know, putting in 100 yards.
Why don't you explain that in layman terms so that we can understand what the efficiencies mean?
So, efficiency means that when we started the GMP, we set out a pour schedule. So, we said, you know, for us to pour a wall, for example, we go through a process. We just don't show up the truck. You have to plan it, get the rebar, get, you know, put the forms in place, place the rebar, get all the inspections done, then pour. And a pour cycle for us is almost six weeks. So, you see the trucks showing up with the concrete. And in fact, the matter is, there was a lot of work to get there. So, we track those pours, and we actually schedule those pours when we start off. So, as we pull those pours together, that gives us, what I say, a plan. So, we plan to be there when we're ahead of that schedule that's there. Now, we also plan how many man-hours we're going to spend to get to that point. And again, we're doing better than we anticipated.
So, it's taking less man-hours right now than
Yeah.
than the actual schedule work
Right.
that you're doing is really what it boils down to.
Right.
Thank you very much. We'll keep looking at that one. Thank you.
We're looking pretty good. Like I say, we're finalizing the cost of seven, and our first glance is looking pretty positive.
Thank you, Mayor.
Other counsel, anything? Okay. Thank you, Brett. Nice report. And we are now moving along to, that was Section 5, public hearings. To speak during a scheduled public hearing or meeting, please sign in. And even if you don't do that, you have, we'll give you an opportunity to comment. Please limit the comments to three minutes if you'd like to comment. We have one under item number eight tonight, and this will be our final for the evening, and it's under contracts and agreements. 8A is professional services agreement, RH2, engineering, water main replacement project, Crescent Harbor Road, and Regatta Drive intersection improvement. And I see our city engineer, Joe Stoll, at the podium. Take it away, Joe.
Mayor, council members, thank you for having me here tonight. As the mayor said, I'm here to talk about a contract with RH2 to provide water line design for the lowering of a water line at Crescent Harbor and Regatta Drive. I have Brett here with RH2 to help answer any questions towards the end. And I also have Artie with Engineering to help answer any questions about the project when we get there. I do that now because I always forget at the end. It's just one of those things. But anyway, summary of the project, in a nutshell, it's a safety improvement project. Island County has had a number, identified a number of collisions at, well, not only the intersection there at Regatta, but also at Torpedo over the last three years. They obtained a grant to do some improvements. There's different grant programs. There's urban and rural. The rural ones, they tend to find plenty of projects for, but the urban ones tend to be a bit more difficult. And this is one of those that fit that category nicely. So, the project's going to lower the intersection, and I've got some pictures in a minute that you may have seen at the workshop. But it's going to lower the intersection approximately nine feet. That's going to thereby reducing the slopes, helping with, you know, getting started at the intersection if it's icy. Removing the sweeping right-hand turn lane, which I personally like. I'm a little bit disappointed that's going away, but that's the way it is. Got to make it safer. And we're going to introduce a dedicated left turn lane when you go on southbound. So, that's going to be something new as well. So, this is a picture of it as it is today. And you can see we have a 12-inch ductile iron main in Regatta that services the city. And I don't know if you noticed that subtle difference, but you can see how the intersection lowered, widened. And we've, in order to do that work, we have to lower that main. It's about 600 and, I have the number later, but I think 625 feet of main to replace. So, you can see how by getting rid of that sweeping right turn there that I like so much, you've increased the distance between Regatta and Torpedo so that cars have a chance to see what's going on at the intersection, and the right-hand turn signals will hopefully click off instead of staying on like they do now. So, how does Oak Harbor get involved in this? You know, it's a county project. Why are we even standing here tonight? Well, we own the water main, and we have a franchise agreement with the county that says when they do a road project, we'll move our water main, similar to what we have with the state. And it's not entirely uncommon. And the grants that they receive emphasize roadway improvements. So, it tends to be difficult, if not impossible, to get other utilities lowered like, you know, they're not going to pay to lower the gas line that's out there either. So, we have some options. We discussed these in a maybe a little bit different format at the workshop. We can just abandon the water line. That's one of our options. But what that likely means is that we'd have to improve other parts of our system to make up for it, which would be much more expensive because we'd have to go a longer, the longer way around. We could lower our water main independent of the county project. We could go out and hire our own engineer, go out, disrupt the intersection twice, dig nine plus, the extra depth for the water line. We could hire another engineer and have them slip our drawings possibly into the bid docs that they're performing. But it's not entirely an efficient way of doing things either. So, the last option is, is the one that the staff, our staff is recommending, is to contract with the county's preferred engineering firm or qualified engineering firm and have it included in the bid set. So, you know, I kind of go back to this every once in a while. We have to go through a process when hiring an engineer. It's not just pull one out of a hat and give me your best number. We've got to actually go through a selection process. That's in our own code, state and federal law. Island County's already done that, and they went through that process, both the statement of qualifications and interview process, and RH2 was determined to be the most qualified. We reviewed that process with the county, and we also did our own homework on the MRSC and confirmed that RH2 is qualified engineer for doing water system design. And we've had the luxury of reviewing their drawings as this project has come along. We've actually seen the drawings in raw form that were presented at the workshop and that developed that 3D model that you're looking at. And they produced some good work. So, we were confident that they can perform. So, they've, they took, we, you know, once we selected them, we worked out a scope of services. What are they going to do to help us out here? So, it's broken. And normally, in the past, and some time ago, we would only, we would come to you first with design efforts, and then we'd come back when it was time for construction and ask for construction services. We've, for ease, we've lumped it all together. So, the top half of this is all design efforts, and that's roughly $24,000 for design work. And the bottom half is services during construction, roughly $16,000. And keep in mind, this is time and materials not to exceed. They have a fee schedule that they go by. They charge us by the hour. And as Brett attested to at the workshop, they'll give us a printout of their time sheets with notes as to the work that they've done, so we can track them pretty darn close as to the work they've performed. So, the cost of construction, I was off by 50 feet, 675 feet of 12-inch main. If we end up having to do a bypass and don't come up with a more clever way of dealing with, working with the main, we've got about 700 feet of temporary bypass for the water main to keep it active and provide fire flow. As we said at the workshop, we still are going to look into whether or not we need that for, we can do without that line for a short period of time with conversations with the fire department, as long as they know what we're up to. If we can do that in quick order, we're going to check into that and see, and we're going to work with them to do some flow testing here before too long. The cost estimate includes a 10% contingency, sales tax, and comes out to roughly $154,000 in construction costs. So, if you use the typical metric of construction costs to design fees, it's give or take 16%. And depending, you know, as we get into this thing further and actually have design drawings for it, it could be 13%. It could be 18%. But it's still in the ballpark of what you'd expect. So, with that, it's a long recommended action, but that is it. And if you have any questions for me, I'd be glad to take them.
Okay. I guess before we do that, we'll open this to the public, see if we've got any, anybody from the public that would like to speak to this. Okay, seeing none, counsel. Back up here to counsel. Counselor Wassinger?
How long do you expect the construction to take on a project like this?
I'm going to look to Brett to answer that one. Four months?
We're saying six, but hopefully it'll be about four.
Four to six months.
Thank you.
Counselor Munt?
Thank you, Mayor. Is there a reason why, I saw in the picture what people refer to as a water prison, that it has to be there in the corner, because there isn't there one now? And when you go by like Home Depot or a lot of places, it just collects trash. It looks ugly. It stinks. So, is there another option? I'm just asking why it has to be there. There isn't one there now.
Do you want to respond to that one?
Sure.
Hop on up. Introduce yourself.
I'm Brett Bopain with RH2 Engineering. Yeah, we did look at some different options for stormwater facilities. And what was selected was the open pond, the picture that you see. And it's primarily cost-driven. There are options that do meet the minimum standards for stormwater of doing some underground vaults, but it'll add, I'm ballparking about $60,000 to $70,000 in cost to the construction. But it's feasible, yes.
With, with the way the road is now, is it just because it's high? I mean, why, why is it going to be necessary, and it's not collecting water now? So, why are we putting it in?
Yeah. The southbound left turn lane is being added. So, that expands the impervious area in the road, and it puts us over the thresholds for having to provide stormwater management facilities.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Umber?
Mine will be more brief.
Counselor Servadius?
Thank you, Mayor. The, you know, one of the, for the public, one of the explanations was given by H2R, right?
RH2.
RH2, most of the syllable, was, as people make that, that sweeping right, and they turn on the directional, there's not enough straight road then for that directional to click off before someone coming across on Torpedo would have to make a decision, do I have enough time? Or are they truly turning right to go into the back gate there on the base? And last night, going out to take my sons to a lawn job, sure enough, I make that sweeping right, little red sports car sitting there at Torpedo Road, and I look at him and think, no way. And, you know, they came shooting right in front of me. So, I got to experience firsthand your explanation. It was pretty impressive. There was enough room between us, but not a lot of room. So, it'll be interesting to see how that develops. So, thank you.
Counselor Umber?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, the city is obligated to approve this agenda item as a result of the existing blanket franchise agreement between Island County and City of Oak Harbor. That's a given. I've read that franchise agreement, looking for holes in that, and there aren't any. But it does expire in 2022. And it's a bum deal for this city in much of that, especially when the county is the lead, because the county is the one that takes the project. In this case, they get a grant of about 100 and, a million, 101 million thousand. That's
Oh, waste.
Excuse me. One million, $100,000 for this project. That's what was represented at our workshop.
I think that's the total project cost.
That's the total project cost.
And then the match is about 13 and a half percent typically.
Say what?
The match is typically 13 and a half percent.
And they have a match of 13%. So, they have to kick in 13% of that. That's the way I read that. So, that's roughly, in round numbers, $130,000. Remember that number. And also, at our workshop, it was represented that the engineering for this work is approximately $300,000. And, and the county selected that because they are the lead. They went through the process. And the process does not allow the city or the county to select consultants based on money or bid, but on qualifications. And therein lies kind of an inherent problem with the system. The Crescent Harbor County The Crescent Harbor County's decision obligated the city to follow along with this because of the franchise agreement. But we're looking at approximately 40,000 dollars to do 750 feet of 12-inch water main and potentially a, a temporary diversion, which I would also like to know why we haven't done that now so that we know ahead of time why we haven't signed, before we signed this agreement. Can't we do the fire flows? Because we've had discussions about checking the fire flows at each end of that line. We may not have to put in a temporary HDPE or anything else, but wait until the grading is done. So how would you answer that question about when you're going to do the, the testing to see if you need to do it?
Haven't had a chance to do it yet. Arnie, do you know if it's on the schedule?
Hi, I'm Arnie Peterschmidt, project engineer for Oak Harbor Public Works. I've been the, the city's lead on this project to date. We have the fire flow test scheduled for May 10th with Fire Department, or, yeah, May 10th. We had, we were trying to do them in the winter time, but the weather was too cold, it would have frozen some of the instruments we need to use to make our measurements with. And this is the earliest date we've been able to do it.
Okay. So it may not be necessary to put in the, the bypass, given what the fire flow is.
That's right.
And, but also when I look at the county's decision to pay 300,000 dollars on a little over a million dollar project, you know, that's 30% in my book. I don't know where your 16% comes up with, but it, it is, I got the thing, you have it there, you have it up on the board, you can read it up there. It's 10,411 dollars for design for the 750 feet of 12-inch line, when we're not doing any excavation, all of the, all of the cross-sections are already done, all grades elevation, everything is done, the whole packet has to go in, in one bunch, because this agreement, correct me if I'm wrong, says that they're going to bid everything together as a package, water and all of the street improvements. So there, we're in that position already. So my objection in this is that we have a 10,411 dollars to prepare construction drawings. You know, that's probably reasonable. I, I don't have a problem with that. But then we have almost 30,000, maybe 28,000 dollars of administrative stuff. How we get to prepare specifications and bid quantities for 750 feet? We already have 750 feet. You're going to have some fittings in there, you're going to have connections at each end and stuff like that, but we're going to be theoretically, potentially paying over 5,000 dollars to, to, to prepare specifications for that. It's going to be ductile iron, I understand, okay? And we have boilerplate specifications that go into this thing. Brett knows that.
Yes. And I'll actually let Brett answer.
Let me go on. And then we finalized, we, just a minute. We finalized the plans and specifications, construction documents for 8,000 dollars and they're already doing that for the city project. And we're still doing 750 feet plus a potential bypass. And then I get down to services during bidding. This is the one that really gets me, is almost 5,000 dollars, 4,700 dollars for services during bidding when we are doing a, approximately an 80,000 to 100,000 dollar value in that job, that work on this 1 million dollar thing. And remember, they're paying 30% for design services and now if our job is, value is going to be 80,000 and we're paying approximately 40,000 for all the engineering, we're paying 50,000, that's out of scale. And so when I compare that to our project at the wastewater treatment plant, because we only have, we don't have all the details, we can only go on, on percentages and graphs and, and charts and stuff like that based on information we're given. Wastewater Treatment Plant, and this is for a very complicated project, engineering, architecture, public outreach, we had about two years of public outreach, site selection, design type, right up to our 30% of our Windjammer Park improvements. We take that whole package to date that we know of. And that's to give you some comparison, that's about, it's a little less than 15%. And I, and I don't know where we're, this, this 16% on this thing, Joe, I got to say, that's, that spin because the whole project, you look at the whole package that goes to the engineer in this and it's 39,000 dollars that will potentially go to them. And then when we approve it, we have to do it. If it's, if, if, if the money's in the bag, it's probably going to be, get used unless the staff has, is watching every invoice that comes in. And I don't know how you're going to be able to separate services during bidding. How are you going to separate services during bidding, separate Oak Harbor's portion of it from, from the county's portion of it?
First off, I'd like to explain the 16%. If you take 24,000 and divide it by 154,000 dollars of estimated construction cost, you get darn close to 16%.
Well, okay, I, I understand how you got there, but your engineer's got to go through and go down the rest of this line. You're still going to deal with approximately 40,000 dollars.
So as we discussed before, it's time and materials not to exceed, they have a fee schedule that's included in their contract. They're going to provide us with their basically payroll sheets that tells the, I don't know what you break your time into February 15 minutes, that's what I used to do when I was on the private side, with an explanation of the work that was completed. So, I mean, we're going to track this just like we do every construction project with a consultant, if not closer. Actually, the detail that RH2 provides is, is, is much if not more than we typically receive.
Do you typically experience 30, 40, 50% of design on a project for engineering services? Not just design, but the whole design package? That's what I'm comparing it to on the wastewater treatment plant. It's the whole design services package. It's, that's based on Corolo's current contract.
And I'd have to look back at what we have going on with clean water facility because there are a lot of elements to that, from the facilities planning effort to services during construction. And SCADA is another part of that contract, as well as park improvements that kind of skews that whole thing around.
I looked it up and, and we, we have it. We have the number. You have the number.
I, I don't have it in my, with me right now, but I, I can, we displayed it last time.
I don't need to take any more time. I'm making a point and, and I, you know, I appreciate you guys, I trust you, I also trust you to be watching stuff like this because this is a lousy contract franchise agreement with the, with the county, when the county is the lead, because you have nothing to say about it. Neither do we. They, they picked the project, they got the grant, they pay 130,000 dollars. Ours is going to be, our, and then it advertises in the brochure, you look in paragraph two of the brochure that was at our workshop and it says, "There is no cost to the rate payer or the taxpayer." I could get that thing here and I'm going, what do you mean? Maybe to the county people, certainly not to the Oak Harbor people. And I work for the Oak Harbor people, okay? That's all I have, Mayor, thanks.
Okay, so we have a recommended action and how does the council want to proceed? Councilor Servadius?
Thank you, Mayor. I moved to authorize the mayor to sign the professional services agreement with the engineering consulting firm of RH2, Engineering Inc. for Design and Construction Support Services for the Water Main Replacement associated with Crescent Harbor Road, Regatta Drive Intersection Improvements Project in a not-to-exceed amount of 39,960 dollars.
Second.
See, we got a motion by Councilor Servadius and a second by Councilor Muntz to, for the recommended action as presented there on the board. Any other input, questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm not opposed. I, I'm just a late aye.
That was an aye. Passes unanimously. So I think with that, thank you very much. Appreciate your coming down and joining us tonight. Have a safe trip home. Without any further ado, we are adjourned.